Thank you.
Good night, gentlemen.
Yeah.
Follow the screen to order. Our call school building committee meeting to order south of the Polish legions. And our line is stood by the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand. One nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For all.
I want to make an announcement that this meeting is being recorded. The call order and no agenda adjustments for both committees. And due to participation here will be, with remote participation, we will have all remote, our votes will be done by a vote call.
Okay, I'll start the school building committee meeting. Are there any comments to make from the public of the school building committee? Saying none, we'll go right into the approval of the minutes of the June twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four school building committee meeting. Any motion from Situwe?
Second.
Second Rockland, any discussion on the minutes? Saying none, I'll take a vote call vote. Bob Hayward, yes. Tom Vicki?
Yes.
Sandy Baldwin?
Yes.
George Cooney?
Yes.
Jim Coughlin?
Yes.
Bob Mahoney? Yes. Jack Manning? Yes. Bob Mellow?
Yes.
Um, Joe, you weren't here. Where is he now? Okay. Tom, Professor Sully?
Yes.
Thank you, Tom. Dustin Riden?
Yes.
Stan Shawwoke?
Yes.
And Keith Boyle?
Not on the call.
Not on the call, Timmy. Okay. Motion carriers. I'll now turn it over to Kevin Sullivan for the invoices.
Thank you. Good evening. I apologize for not being there tonight. I'm feeling quite under the weather and didn't want to get any of you sick, so bear with me. Tom, do you want me to share the PowerPoint?
Yeah, can you do that from where you are, Kevin?
Absolutely. Uh, it says the host disabled participant screen sharing.
Oh, well, that's just rude. All right, let's see what I can do there. How's that?
There we go. Um, okay, let me just back it up a little bit. Okay, so we've approved the meeting minutes. The next item is OPM contract amendment number three for eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Uh, this is really just um kind of some bookkeeping. Back in March, um my predecessor Jen uh worked with your committee to advertise CM at risk services in the Patriot Ledger. Um, that the cost for that was seven hundred and eighty dollars and uh that was run through Leftfield's office, so there's a seventy-eight dollar markup. Uh, for whatever reason, that we hadn't received the bill on that until very recently, so this is uh this is really just catching up on that. So it's eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars uh for again for mostly just advertising uh CM at risk in the Patriot Ledger. Happy to answer questions.
I agree, not Kevin. None.
Um, Tom, does there need to be a motion to approve this?
Well, we can take, we can take up this matter, then the next one, you want to, you want to wait on and do that after?
Absolutely.
Motion to approve the contract amendment three, Noah. Make the motion second by Situwe. I mean, discussion on the motion. I'll take a vote call. Bob Hayward, yes. Tom Vicki?
Yes.
Sandy Baldwin?
Yes.
George Cooney? Yes. Jim Coughlin?
Yes.
Bob Mahoney? Yes. Jack Manning? Yes. Bob Mellow? Tom Professor Sully?
Yes.
Joe Zandval? Yes. Dustin Riden?
Yes.
Dan Shawwoke? Yes. And Keith Snodgrass. Motion carries.
Okay, the next item are the invoices for the month of June, uh which include a ten thousand dollar invoice for Leftfield. And I believe, oops, and a ninety thousand dollar invoice for DRA. Happy to answer questions.
Yep.
This is just in the feasibility study?
Correct. Yep, the, these are, yep, these are all, sorry, it keeps jumping on me. Um, yep, these are all within budget and um, you know, standard basics, uh scope of services within the feasibility study.
I'm in more than, uh, I want to understand a motion, motion, Rockland. Second by?
Second.
Who is that? Dustin, Noah, any discussion? Bob, Bob Hayward? Yes, Tom Vicki?
Yes.
Keith, uh Keith Snodgrass, George Cooney?
Yes.
Sandy Baldwin?
Yes.
Jim Coughlin? Yes. Bob Mahoney?
Yes.
Jack Manning?
Yes.
Bob Mellow? Joe Zandval? Yes. Tom Professor Sully?
Yes.
Dustin Riden? Yes. Dan Shawwoke? Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes.
The next. The next item, the next item is the feasibility budget. Feasibility study budget, uh no major changes from last month. Uh, the committed amount uh remains the same at seventy-nine percent. Uh, the, the expended amount has, you know, I think it was at fifty-eight percent last month, uh based on the most recent invoices. It's now at sixty-three percent, uh but really no major changes. Again, we have uh roughly a little more than four hundred thousand dollars in uncommitted funds. We anticipate, um, you know, upwards of two hundred thousand dollars and some of the extra services related to subconsultants, site testing and so forth. Uh, you know, cost estimating, which we're going through right now, which would leave us uh with a little over two hundred thousand dollars in savings for this part of the budget. So w- we believe we are still on track for that.
Any comments on the budget update? Saying none, I'll start Kevin.
Thank you. All right, one more item. Again, we've touched on this past couple of months, just reminding folks, we are, we remain on schedule to to go to the October MSBA Board of Directors meeting. In order to do that, uh it requires an August submission. Um, we are currently working with the cost estimators. Uh, there will be a reconciliation next Tuesday, the thirtieth, uh to see, I guess, you know, we were doing three separate cost estimates to make sure we have uh the most accurate and up-to-date budget information before we present to the MSBA. We'll have that, or we'll work through that on Tuesday and we'll have inform, more information uh in the coming days following that. Uh, and we will be presenting, you know, the, the updated uh construction budget to this group, I believe, on August seventh. Uh, submitting that to MSBA mid-August and then submitting the full schematic design package to the MSBA by August twenty-ninth. So um we, there, there are really no, that hasn't changed and just kind of reminding folks of some of those milestones, that's all.
Chair, go ahead. Just to, just to uh expand a little bit on what Kevin's saying, uh, school building committee members will, will confirm with you, but we're looking at August seventh and August twenty-first for August meeting dates in order to deliver on what Kevin just described. So the August seventh meeting will be a deeper dive as we'll hear back on reconciliation numbers from those three sets of cost estimate, uh estimates that, that the, the team is working on. And then two weeks later, when the team has completed the schematic design documents, we'll get, we'll reconvene to have them present that. So we'll confirm with folks and their availability, but those would be the two dates that we seem to be trending toward. The twenty, the date on the twen, the twenty-first vote allows the team enough time to meet that August twenty-ninth deadline. So that will uh, that will, uh, those will be the, the two anchor dates for August. Thank you.
Now, Tom, what's the script of building?
That, that's the thing, we may have some school, because we typically don't have a August school committee meeting, uh, this is a good opportunity if there are school committee items that come up. We might have a joint meeting, but uh, but as of now, it uh, it would be light if anything.
Okay, very good. Anyone have anything else for the school building committee? Tom, are you all set? I look like I'm not doing. Yeah. Okay.
Not needs.
Oh, you're all set, right?
I'll, I'll set, Bob, sorry, I was muted there or something.
Just, just checking with you, Tom.
We, we've had, you know, working group sessions with the team to keep us up to date, but nothing uh new for the building committee this, uh, this meeting.
Okay, thank you, Tom. All right. With that, I want to, and motion to adjourn the school building committee base. So Situwe, second by, what is it? Uh, I'll call a vote. Bob Hayward, yes. Tom Vicki?
Yes.
Sandy Baldwin?
Yes.
George Cooney? Yes. Jim Coughlin? Yes. Bob Mahoney? Yes. Jack Manning? Yes. Bob Mellow?
Yes.
Joe Zandval? Yes. Tom Professor Sully?
Yes.
Dustin Riden?
Yes.
And Dan Shawwoke?
Yes.
Motion carries, the, yeah, school building committee is meeting as determined. All of you with me, Karen?
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Saying it, we're open, still open for the school building, uh committees are complete, now we're on the uh school committee, normal monthly meeting. Uh, right now is, uh, first thing I'd like to do is welcome Jose Zanval from Marshfield, that first official meeting with him being on board.
You're gonna take us all to the interest.
Is there anybody in the audience for public comment to the school committee? Eric Mancino, uh entertained a, uh, quote to, for the minutes of the June twenty-sixth, thousand twenty-four meeting. For, record motion here, Noah, second Situwe. Any questions on the minutes? All those in favor? Hey, so, you know, vote call vote, Tom Von Stil?
Yeah.
So, vote call vote, be here, Noah?
Yes.
Situwe?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Abbotton?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Cohasset?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
And Rockland, yes. As you may know, great. Uh, vote on invoices. Uh, that are in your packet, oh, sorry. Skip the page. Try to report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, in your package, you have the, and I apologize, I just was away for ten days in glorious Scotland, so um getting back and dealing with everybody. Yeah. Um, so your points are in your, are you destined? So on the front page in the picture, taking off a Facebook, we're, we're, go all the way, but are the two gold medalists from the um uh two thousand twenty-four convention, uh, so here Grasso and, and uh, Brooks on, uh, for the graphic game, graphics stuff, so that's a very common script. And second page is our cash balances at the beginning of June. The um, next page is our revenues during the course of um June, we see the women had not paid their, their final assessment back in May, but they did get one week back this in June. So everybody's paid up for their assessments last year and then we did receive our chapter seventy-one, four hundred and seventy-two thousand. And we got the final solid of our regional transportation for four hundred and one thousand. So we've budgeted high on the regional transportation, so we're, we only have a surplus of about twenty-three thousand dollars so far um this year, so, but that's, that's just with the budget process, so we're, we're good to with that. The next pages are expenditures. Um, again, fifteen thousand dollars for the um, that's, yeah, fifteen million is the budget. Uh, two point two one million was um the expenditures for the month. You part of these things and the, part of the, the expenditures of the votes that we took last year and last month. One was the bus leases that were, were incorporated into our fiscal twenty-four numbers along with the transfer of four hundred and twelve thousand into our stabilization fund. So overall, our spending for the year is uh fourteen million, two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. Um, we also incorporate the summer payroll for all of our contracted teachers, which is in the encumbrance column, nine hundred and forty thousand dollars. So what happens is that, you know, keep the contract expulsed sometime to the end of August, so the teachers will be on the same every two week schedule through the summer, will be reincorporated. We take all that money and incorporate it into fiscal twenty-four. So overall, looking into the year, the amount remaining, we have a, we have a positive hundred and thirteen thousand dollars of um budget savings, which will drop into our um excess and efficiency account for the year. So overall, we have, excuse me, about fifty-three thousand of excess revenue. Um, hundred and thirteen thousand of excess um savings and expenses, so we have a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars that'll drop down to our S um excess and efficiency account, which is usually good. We are using some of our E and D the next year, um, under twenty-five thousand dollars part of our budget to, to pay for the, the votes that are going to be happening uh for the building back in, in January. So this will be the one that's standing up, which is good.
Um, can a motion on this report? Someone? Second? Oh, it's, it's, oh, it's, uh, because we will call vote, uh, we'll go with Abbotton?
Yes.
Cohasset?
Yes.
Hannover?
Yes.
Anderson? Not yet, right? In Marshfield?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Rockland, yes. Situwe? Yes. And Whitman?
Yes.
Okay, that is great. Jim, anything else?
Yeah, the budget transferred on the last page, um, again, moving money into various accounts, um, for special education, technology, payroll taxes, repairs, maintenance and professional involvement, um, totaling fifty-one thousand five hundred. We haven't identified savings in the officials in police details on account of fifty-one thousand, kind of on the one who come up. Just a quick note that we had, we had a large number in the um officials, um, in police vehicles and the athletic budget. Because when we think of budget a year ago for fiscal twenty-four, we had, we used to pay for our athletic training services as a contract and that's, it used to go on the slide. But for this past year, we actually had someone on payroll to do the athletic train, so we use more payroll for the athletic trainer, didn't use any of this money for athletic training, so, um, so that's why it's just, uh, it's, we didn't mostly miss budget this line and we just, the fact that, that we ended up getting a payroll person as a postwork, you know, because we had signature healthcare as our athletic training group the last few years until we had it on the page, so.
Oh, you just came to motion? I'm set to report. Budget transfers?
Um, I propose that we do the budget transfers mounting in fifty-one thousand five hundred dollars.
So.
Okay, motion and a second? Oh, uh, we'll, we'll call vote. Abbotton?
Yes.
Cohasset?
Yes.
Hannover?
Yes.
Marshfield?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Rockland, yes. Situwe?
Yes.
And Whitman?
Yes.
That is a bonus. There were any other updates? Uh, not a plan. Okay, great. Uh, chairman note was, uh, I already did earlier, Mr. Rockland, Joe, the goal from, uh, Marshfield, for the committee. And right now, turn it over to the superintendent director.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, members of the committee. I'm going to put a presentation up on the screen. You also have a hard copy of it in the yellow folder that is easier for you to look at. The back, the background here, as you know, is that we have been working on a, an, a series of language changes to our regional agreement. Uh, working with the Department of Education, uh, in order to adjust how we calculate our debt share in um in our regional agreement. And so what I'd like to do is run through a few slides here, let's see. To, just learned this early today, I have slogan media controls, all right? Okay. I don't think I can hide this one, but I'll do my best. Okay, so being that it's July and seeing that we've got a series of our communities holding fall special town meetings, uh, I will likely be coming back to the committee in August, perhaps early August, looking to, uh, looking to secure your approval. There is not a lot that has subsequently changed, uh, in this presentation from even earlier this year. It's taken a long time to uh get loops of feedback from, uh, Department of Education. But I had a meeting, uh, earlier this week and intend to have one next week. So let me just, I, what I want to try to do is go, uh, a little bit backwards and forwards here. That, that makes it work better. Oh, so just for, in terms of, just to reorient ourselves, the regional agreement amendment will change the debt share calculation to a four-year rolling or, you will adjustable average versus a fixed amount at the time of project approval. By early August, we'll have a committee-approved regional agreement amendment. The way the process works is that it comes from this committee and then it goes to our communities where they take up the matter at a town meeting. They're not obligated to hold a special town meeting, uh, it, it would be something that, uh, if it were timed differently, might get in the annual. But nevertheless, I feel as though we are going to have an ample number of our communities who will be having special slash fall town meetings. What I know as of now is that Hanson has a special town meeting on October seventh. Both Rockland and Situwe have special town meetings on November eighteenth and Cohasset has one on December ninth. Uh, and I'll keep you updated as I hear more about other dates. I believe Marshfield has one in December, I haven't confirmed that. I, Dustin, you have an update for us?
Yeah, Noel is, uh, due to the, uh, N B T A housing issue, we are planning on having one in early December as well.
Fantastic, thank you. The intention here is to square away this important matter before we have, uh, a vote on building project. That is the, the, the logical sequence is, let's amend this agreement, I, uh, and then it goes in that way. And then we, and then in January, we pick up the matter of, uh, uh, seeing what the support is, but it will allow us to make projections uh, using this adjustable rate, which, which will be good. Six towns out of our now nine need to affirm or approve it. And once that happens, it would be sent along to the commission. We revised our regional agreement in twenty-seventeen, we revised it a year ago with the addition of Marshfield. So, uh, this is, this is, this is the same exact process. By the way, feel free to interrupt if at any point, some of these slides get a little, uh, get a little dense. The speaker isn't, but the slides might be, so let's, let's see, let's see, let's see how we do. This is a, fewer words, more pictures, this is an attempt to just orient people to the fact that our current regional agreement says that when, if we're going to, if we're going to assess debt, when you hear me talk about a fixed three-year lookback, it basically means that whenever a project is approved, whether it's through a bunch of town meetings or district-wide ballot, we use the enrollments from the three fiscal years prior. That's the gray at the top. So whatever, you put, put in whatever number you'd like and just go to the three previous fiscal years. And within those three previous fiscal years, there's always an October one report and that's the number we harvest. Okay. Now, to take that fake example and put something that's a little more real, as of this minute, the way that our agreement works is we're going to be asking our voters in our district in fiscal twenty-five whether or not they're going to approve this project. If this agreement doesn't change, we would go back to the three previous fiscal years as noted on the screen and that would be it. Whatever the shares are, the number of kids from your town divided by the, by the total, that share is fixed. The intention here is to change this language, to change this approach. Now, on several slides in this presentation, I'll be making special comment about Marshfield, because when we brought Marshfield into the district, everybody understood that Marshfield needed some time for an on-ramp in order to gather more enrollment data. So what I'm talking about on the screen here really is the incumbent towns, the eight, the eight towns, if you will. This slide, a little more detail, just walks you through this on-ramp from Marshfield. So if, again, if nothing changed, what the agreement currently says is, or there's no debt in fiscal twenty-five. And then from fiscal twenty, as your eyes scan down this chart, you'll start to see patterns of where it's like the shares based on an enrollment and you'll notice how that fiscal year changes. It's basically a pay-as-you-go adjustable model for Marshfield. And our, and our plan was that in fiscal thirty, given a, given an agreement that said debt share is fixed, it was in fiscal thirty that we said Marshfield will have had enough enrollment history to calculate that share, fix it and freeze it. And that would be true for the rest of the ball, of the borrow. Fiscal, fiscal thirty-one and fiscal thirty-two, uh, there's a slight, there was a slight tweak for fiscal thirty-one because if hypothetically there was new debt that was being borrowed, we were also going to have that be adjustable. And if there's new debt in fiscal thirty-two, it would be based, and I'm making that up totally. I'm saying hypothetically, if this building project were not to pass and we borrowed no money, what would happen if we all of a sudden had to borrow money in year seven or eight? The focus, the, the, the North Star for this model is the same North Star for the revision, which is fair to everybody. How do you make an apples-to-apples comparison? We don't want any community feeling that their debt share was calculated in a way that didn't seem fair. So what, what we did was, a year plus ago, we said, when is a reasonable time for a new community to gather that enrollment history so we could make a comparison? And that's what we did here, and now I'll show you how that same concept will work in an adjustable model. Slide here. Okay. So here's the same, this is, this looks very similar to that earlier stream. Let me just explain the difference. Uh, you now have to look at this through the lens of it's going to change every year. So you're going to build your budget, fiscal whatever, you pick whatever number you want. Our school committee always certifies the budget the year before. We do this, this is what we do. We're, we're, we're going to build the fiscal twenty-six budget in, you know, and we're going to, you, you folks are going to certify it in fiscal twenty-five. And then we will use the enrollment data that comes from the previous four fiscal years. So here are just a couple of random examples, they just picked fiscal thirty-three and fiscal forty-two. It's, you can see, you can see the bouncing ball, how it, how it goes backwards. You build it in thirty-three, it gets certified in thirty-two and you grab the enrollments from these four years. With each passing year, that's how you get that adjustable or that rolling average. One year drops off, one year comes on. It's the closest concept to a pay-as-you-go model, which we already have in our regional agreement that we use for capital, the way it's operated, plus above the minimum. So this is where we're headed. We've added another year to help control for volatility. There is one exception that I note on a later slide, but I'll say it now. Because we already know the last, we, because we already have a three-year lookback, if we get this building project approved, we will for the very first year of borrowing, in fiscal twenty-six, which will be the smallest amount of borrowing, we're going to have that as a three-year lookback. That is my own, that's the only exception. And the reason we left the first year alone is because we actually have factual data that we can use. So rather than make any changes, so that when we can say, we can say to any community right now that whatever the fiscal twenty-six debt share is, I keep saying like, it's going to be eight hundred thousand dollars in interest. I can say right now what every town's shit, shouldn't share would be for year one, that's fiscal, that's fiscal twenty-six. So I may know of that exception, but for the arc of a thirty-year borrowing, years two through thirty are, are the model that you see on the screen. On this slide, I take what I said on the previous slide on Marshfield and I try to show you, okay, so let's talk about this Marshfield on-ramp again, on-ramp again, and what has changed? So basically, nothing changes through the fiscal twenty-year budget cycle. And then instead of going to a fixed model, Marshfield would remain on an adjustable model a little bit longer until their enrollment history is sufficient enough to match everyone else's talents. So that we're not taking an average that is, that it would be perceived as premature. So adjustable until what I'm showing here is fiscal thirty-three. Again, the North Star is fair and comparable. So what did we, we added a year to make a four-year rolling average, so we need to allow a little more time to, for our, our new community to gather that enrollment history. And this is just another pretty chart to show you how we arrived at fiscal thirty-three. So you pick whatever, you know, covering your left eye or your right eye, see how you're doing, but, so if we're going to build fiscal twenty-six, we certify that budget in fiscal twenty-five, we use the enrollments from, remember I said that one-time exception, we're going to use the enrollments from the three previous years. How many grades of Marshfield students are enrolled in each of these three fiscal years? None officially, they weren't a member. Now, you can follow the numbers as it goes down and you'll see how the, how this appears. With each passing year, we follow the same left-to-right model. And you'll notice that as we start getting Marshfield's enrollment data And you'll notice that as we start getting Marshfield's enrollment data. Here, in their very first year of collecting Sims data, they've got a group of freshmen. Et cetera, et cetera. So when is the first fiscal year? That we'll be able to build. A debt share that is truly apples-to-apples. And that will be here, fiscal thirty-three, which we're gonna build in fiscal thirty-two. And we're gonna take the enrollments from thirty-one, thirty, twenty-nine, and twenty-eight. And now Marshfield's enrollment history mirrors that of every other community in the district. They've had ninth graders, tenth graders, eleventh graders, and twelfth graders in the building for four years. Okay, let me kind of, I'll put a pin in it right now. Is there any, is there anything immediate that I can answer for you?
I have a question.
Dan?
When the school gets approved. And the young people will be able to accept nine hundred students. Is the base amount of students that are allowed in each member town can change?
Unless this board or a future board. Changes its admissions policy, no. It would simply still be a percentage. Of whatever number of seats the district says is available. We won't do nine hundred overnight.
No.
Based on operating budgets, but the system would remain the same. It would just be scaled to whatever number we could afford during.
If all students of all the different towns are accepted. And we have another. Forty seats and we can put them all like we used to.
The regulations allow for that, absolutely correct. Yeah.
So just a question, Mark, this is obviously branded. Do they follow the same methodology as everyone else for adult kiddos?
That's a.
Next year?
Actually, that's right, Joe. So this past spring and in and into the summer. Uh Marshfield was apportioned seats in the same way Dan was asking. The percent, it's the percentage of kiddos in grade eight. And that determines each town's initial allotment. So Marshfield was is, it's being handled the same way. Thanks. Yep, no problem. So that's the, so that's the, that's kind of the, that's the background to arriving at why that fiscal year and 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 why why the on-ramp the way it is. So now try to tie it together, and I'm gonna give you one simulation, just about that. Marshfield's debt share from twenty-six to thirty-two will be calculated annually. Based on the percentage of Marshfield students divided by the total number of indistrict students in the building. And the resulting amount will be used as an offset. So I want you to keep that calculation on one side of your of 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 your, like a post-it note over here. There's gonna be a Marshfield calculation. How many Marshfield kids divided by the total kids. We're gonna do that over here. And the other eight towns, we're gonna do the same thing during this window until Marshfield gets enough kids in the building. It'll be calculated with a three-year look back for fiscal twenty-six only. And then it'll be followed by that four-year rolling average. Where the debt share will be calculated based on the respective share of enrollment. So this is all about proportions, it's all about percentages. And then in fiscal thirty-three, everybody's been here long enough. Where you, it's it, there's no separate calculations. So. Here's, here's an example, if you bear with me just a little bit longer, to try to show you how it's two separate calculations. So when Jim's preparing. Uh the assessment sheets, this is how we would look at it. Let's pretend that smack dab in like in the middle of this, say in fiscal twenty-eight, we've got a debt share of a million bucks. So the first thing, or it doesn't matter which order you do this, but let's say the first thing you do is, alright, Marshfield. It's fiscal twenty-eight, they're on the pay-as-you-go model, they're on an adjustable model. It's a fiscal twenty-eight, uh it's a fiscal twenty-eight budget. We're go, we're going to look at the Marshfield numbers. Let's pretend that they had twenty kids out of five hundred. So they're gonna have four percent. Okay? Four percent, uh four percent of a million bucks, forty grand. That's the offset. When we go to our other eight communities and say Marshfield joining the district is going to provide an offset. On debt costs, this is a very, you know, sim watered-down version of this, but. So now we we know that Marshfield has a debt share, and we know that this debt share is gonna provide relief. On a piece of paper that Jim puts together for our other communities. So now, let's look at the other eight towns, and we'll just call it Town A. We're gonna, we're gonna take the Town A enrollments from the last four years, right? We're doing our four-year look back with our uh original eight, if you will. We're gonna divide it by the total enrollment. So let's just skip all that math and say that we'll pretend that Town A. Ended up with a sixteen percent share. Their share of the debt. For fiscal twenty-eight on this rolling average model is a hundred and sixty grand. So what we would do is we would say, we'll take sixteen percent of Marshfield's share. And apply it as an offset. So the actual debt share that will be baked into Town A's overall assessment. Will be, will be inherent. And this will be the process that we would follow each year as Marshfield increases its enrollment. And as you've seen on some pretty busy slides from me in the past. The general thought is, if Marshfield sends thirty kids a year for the next four years. Their share would probably go from. Four to eight to twelve, maybe to sixteen. And it won't plateau at sixteen because the building's not getting any bigger for the next four years. But this, this would be, this would be the model that we would follow in order to do that calculation. Until we get to that point, like I said in the earlier presentation, where. Everybody has enough enrollment. So I think that's the, oh, this is my last slide. So I guess, do you have a question?
Uh, no, I can.
Thank you, okay. Uh. Four-year rolling average is a fair way to account for changes in time and moments over time. When we assess other costs that aren't in the chapter seventy formula like capital and operating. We don't use fixed enrollments. We're always looking at, for operating costs above the minimum, we're always looking at. The most recent October first report. So this is in keeping with. The philosophy we already have in our agreement. And as I said at the very beginning, Marshfield's on-ramp changes slightly, but the underlying concept's the same. To pay an adjustable rate based on annual enrollment until there's enough enrollment data to calculate that four-year rolling average. Dustin?
I'd answer you two questions, and I'll try to be brief. Um so not being from an area with a regional district or getting some of these other towns are. Do we have examples of where this type of model is working in other regional districts?
No. No, thi- thi- this, this is, this is a, this is a unique model. That's based on this, uh based on the premise that neither the new community nor the district. Wanted to, if we had agreed to a fixed sum of money, like you wanna come in, new town X. It'll be twenty-seven point five million dollars here over thirty years to die. Then I, I could have skipped this presentation. Uh but no, no, I I I and I've I've had a conversation with Desi Regional Office. So I don't think we're breaking new ground, I think just.
Kinda do it in a different way.
Try trying to, yeah, trying to find a way that says, if we want to enlarge our district. But nobody really knows what anyone's enrollment is gonna be in three, five, seven years. Then then the best we can do is to say, what do we currently use now to adjust when enrollment's adjusted? So. Yeah.
Now, my next question is, remember changing the from a's. The standards three-year look back to the four, and this is a rolling average. And you know that we've been talking a lot about when towns go to vote, when we ask everyone to vote for this, we're gonna be talking about debt exclusion.
Yes.
How does this change affect the debt, the ability for communities to debt exclude? The part of the project?
Yeah, our our council has, uh our council has advised, it's a, there's a, there's an answer at the end of this. Uh our council has advised that when you go for a debt exclusion, you're asking the voters to exclude the debt. For the project versus a fixed number. Once that is affirmed by the local community, then as the debt share goes up and down. The financial teams and the towns get to, so when they get the report from Jim that says. If Norwell's assessment is a million dollars and a hundred grand of that is for the building project, oh, right, that was excluded debt. Now, Norwell doesn't have to fit all of that under the levy limit.
So if that changes.
If it goes to a hundred and two or it goes to eighty-eight.
It's all still, it's all still, I consider that as a concern that had been raised.
Yes, it's, it it is not a, it's not a. The 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 ballot question will very likely state the total amount of the project. And I believe I've seen other ballot questions, law of legalese, that that says the amount. But that's the ballot question for our, this is, yeah, everything. Uh I I'm I'm not an expert on how the debt exclusion one would read, but I've at least been told that yes. Even even for a single-town project where um, you know, in the last few years of the of the um of a project. You assume that the numbers are beginning to dwindle, maybe maybe they are, depending on how it's financed. Uh so that's the, I guess that's the long answer to the question, that it would, it would not impact. We don't have to have the number right for the next thirty years fixed up from.
We're not debt excluding a specific amount, we're just debt excluding the debt.
Precisely, precisely.
Thank you very much.
Uh, question there. Then doing that. Is that number each year gonna be on a separate? Uh. Page or line item so that when the voters are voting, they don't think that uh. Such a lot of tax operating budget just jumped by. Four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
It will always be on us to be able to explain it. Uh I I don't know what the rules are on how towns break down their warrant. But our job will be to present a detailed assessment sheet. So when we, so when we borrowed money in the past. If you looked at our most recent budget uh assessment sheet, it would say debt service and a bunch of goose eggs.
Yeah.
So that's where we would put it. So we would be able to say Whitman's assessment is X, and of that number, this much is that debt service.
We would end up, we have an article too that has all budgets, and then anything that's like debt exclusions and stuff like that.
Right.
Anything on that, John?
Hi, John. Um, John Galpin, we went to Marshfield. Honestly, the debt exclusion part of. The assessment doesn't even need to be voted on in town meeting. It goes straight to the tax rate and, and you know.
Like this is debt exclusion, so.
It's a debt exclusion, so when you vote the debt exclusion. In year one, it's effective all thirty years throughout. The towns do not approve a specific number of each year. They it can go on there, but it doesn't happen. I mean, for instance, Whitman approved um. Uh two hundred and forty thousand dollars for there. It's gonna end up being four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Doesn't matter that they didn't vote it, it just gets, when they set the tax rate, this is the excluded amount, it's been approved.
Right.
It changes, and and to answer Mr. Ridd's question. Whitman and Hanson are the only two that are technically in a different. You know, uh. School region, yeah, region. And each year, we set our um assessment for the high school based on enrollment. The only difference is, we don't do the four-year look back, we do whatever it was. Now, take Marshfield out of the picture. So it's very similar to what Whitman, Hanson is doing. Just eliminating the four-year look back. It's whatever it is prior to the year. Is what goes, gets assessed to the council in high school.
Based on the change in public.
Based on the change in town, so when October one enrollment comes out.
Right.
You know, and I actually really like the four-year look back, because.
Thank you.
Nice part.
Thank you.
It's all political, so.
You're good.
And it's, so not not to jump ahead, you know, but this will be operated for 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 Marshfield. Do you have any idea what the ballot question's going to look like? And we give you, again, it's gotta be simple for us. And we have to vote, right? And it's new.
Yes.
And you go through this, we're getting brand-new to the program here, and now we're adding them to school.
Yes.
So.
So so the the text of the ballot question is 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 pretty boilerplate, but what we're gonna be able to communicate. Before the end of next month to all of our communities, based on what the project team said earlier is. They're gonna tell us. Here's what we think the project budget is gonna be. Here's what we think the state grant is gonna be, totally unofficial. And we won't know until MSBA signals a little bit before the October meeting. So there will be, so so will we have very specific information? Yes, the 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 variable. That Marshfield takes on, maybe a little bit more than everybody else, is, okay, well, how, if if someone in Marshfield asks the question. How much will our share be? If I'm asked that question coming with you to a meeting, my answer is gonna be. I can only give you a projection. But if it, but if the enrollment in the eighth grade, if the eighth grade enrollments are roughly steady and everybody stays in their lane of. I'm an oversubscribed town, I'm an undersubscribed town, I'm a Marshfield, we don't have an identity yet. But if we say that the school for the next four years, and I keep saying four years because that's how long it would be before, we could expand any capacity. I think Marshfield could be about fifteen to sixteen percent. So when we start doing projections, what I would be, what I would be saying to folks is, and to Dustin's point, it might not, it might not always be sixteen percent. But it, and it will go up when the enrollment goes up, and it will go down when the enrollment goes down. But when folks are forming an opinion as to whether to support this, I would give them the best possible projection. Knowing that we won't know for, we won't have, we will have no other data sets. Uh for Marshfield prior to asking the voters. We have one data set of a group of night birds. I'm taking that number and saying, I think that's a very solid start. And I think that that's, it's a reasonable projection. So. But like with every other community, whether they're an established community or 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 new. There is, it's it's the idea of exclude, as John was saying, it's excluding the the debt. And then the the number might adjust. We still have to bring an operating budget every year, of course, so.
The question will look the same across all lines?
It has to. You're absolutely right, Joe. It it has to be, it it would be the same question, the same, the uh the same ballot. Uh that that gets approved, yeah, exactly what I'm.
Thank you.
Yeah, Tom Marshfield now realizes that they'll have two high schools now, not just one.
Right. You know, it's, you know, it's new to folks, right? Generally, people just, you know, wow, what's going on, you know, what's going on, you know, we. They're taking a couple of years like that, watching people come down at the start with. And then let's see what's happening.
And it's not like the people would just say, well, we, you know, for us to buy into the district, it was uh thirty-five million dollars, like, you know, this is the way in.
Yeah, well, based on interest, really.
Yeah, okay. That is to expand upon what Dan was asking. I mean, Dan, there might be some towns specifically Cohasset. That might not do a debt exclusion. They might, if their share is two hundred grand a year for their debt. They might just want, they just might wanna pay for it as part of their budget, not debt exclusion. And I was, one question to Tom would be that. It would, you will have to do the charing and communication with all the towns, but. Again. As each town goes for their own little debt exclusion ballot for this project. If my town rejects it. There, and everybody else, and you know, everything passes, they're on the hook for that, and got. And they'll have to pay for that a little budget because they don't have the, they never, they didn't vote the debt exclusion, so. It it might affect everybody a little bit differently.
Yeah, the matter of whether a community takes on a debt exclusion is entirely, right, is entirely their fault. From all the communications with our communities, I, it seems that. That would be clearly the best option. They're not gonna want to exhaust so many competing capital projects, operating expenses, operational overrides. This is, this is a significant capital project that you cannot fit under a levy limit. That's, but each community on their own schedule. Uh some, some might do it sooner than others. We'll have to attempt to take up that matter. Yeah, you're right, Jim. So, yeah, so thank you for, thank you for listening to all of that. Uh. Hanson has the first town meeting. Uh sorry, special town meeting on October seventh. Uh they have warrants, they have a soft warrant deadline of August second. I've been in communication with the town administrator. Um. And so I, you know, with without any objection, my intention would be to share a draft of what we have, it has not been voted on by you. To to be able to have a placeholder. And then I would likely ask you, uh the the goal would be that I would get feedback from Michelle Griffin and Chris Lynch at the Desi Regional Office. Very soon. And if I, and to your earlier question, Dan, about what kind of meeting might August seventh be? It might be that I would be asking this committee to vote formally. On this amendment, so that it's a, it's 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 formal and it can go. But but the the folk that at least agree and has said that there's an opportunity, we can make adjustments to the language. There will be a drop-dead deadline for the warrant language. We wanna make sure it is absolutely perfect.
How many towns are you, are you ready to respect that?
At at this point, Dan, I only have information on four plus Dustin right now, so that's, that's five.
So we have six and all six pass them, but good.
Then the last hurdle, if you will, would be going to.
They not add them, we don't know.
Yeah, would be going to the commissioner. It it it's, it's, we can't, we can't insist on it. Obviously, there's a local expense that has to be undertaken. But I'll be in communication with all town administrators, be mindful of their deadlines, uh warrant deadlines, select board deadlines. Um and and really ready to go and get into the weeds of folks to to make sure that they feel comfortable. Uh I'll also, once I know that this is approved, you know, or at least it's, Desi hasn't thrown major red flags. This um, this strike-through version I gave you with all, I mean, cut, and. This will be something I'll put on our website, and it's got the line numbers down the side, so, you know, anyone can say, I don't understand line two hundred and six, what are you doing now? Uh and and we'll make sure that 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 is circulated. I'll probably record this separately from this meeting. Try to be a little more concise, record this, and then send this out to town, town officials, so they can also digest it on their own. I I I I could, I have one fucking hand, but I can, I can make some others. Yeah, I got a copy of John. Okay, great. So, uh, yeah, so thank you and show.
I have one question. Five town meetings you voted for in December. What if it doesn't, you don't get a six? And what if one of those town meetings doesn't pass?
Yes.
Then we go to the vote in January, still under the old. What happens then? Does, when it does pass, does it change everything?
I asked the regional agreement office a similar question, John. When it comes to adding another community, there's a rule that says. The commissioner's gotta sign off by New Year's Eve for it to go into effect next July. So I asked him, I said, what if? What if for some reason, it is what it is, we can't control what the towns do, but if we don't have the minimum six. But let's say a town calls a special in January or it's February or they, they decide they're gonna bump it. Uh, the good news is that we don't have to wait like it's next, like we did to add, add a meeting town. That once the commissioner signs off, it could happen. From a, from an optics point of view, if we can't say to communities prior to our January twenty fifth vote. That we've resolved the matter, you know, that's, that's, that's gonna be a challenge. But as of this moment, I'm not hearing. At least unofficially of any opposition. It's just a matter of, I personally would, would love to have those town meetings taken care of before.
I guess my point is, is it, this. This is a huge change that affects Whitman and. Uh, Whitman really needs this app. So if you only end up with five, I would. Suggest maybe reach out to Mr. Sanucci and see if what, schedule something. Because this really is passing Whitman. Whitman's gonna be really hard against this whole thing. Where it's not getting the way it is to our town.
Yes, yes, I, I understand that.
All I can tell you is Hanover still has an MBTA then hanging over our head.
Yes.
Like you do, like normal. Situate, I, we, I don't know if you do that. We, we still have it hanging over our head and we have to make a decision by fall December, whatever.
It's like December thirty first a minute.
Right. Probably going to happen. I just don't think, just I'm scared.
Right.
Cause I know it's hanging over our head.
Like when is there, you know, I'm sure the town administrators know of everything that's going on with the state side, that they're gonna have fifty six.
Mr. Chair, to, to dance, when does it have to be voted? There's no rule. The idea would be that if this. If there's consensus around this and there's support, our ability to say to our communities. That we've adjusted our regional agreement and it will go into effect with the first year of borrowing. It, it is in our best interest to have our communities do that before, before January of twenty twenty five.
Okay, so we don't have. Yeah, twenty twenty five. If we don't have a special, which I don't think we have. I try to have, yeah, one because of the increase in the middle school. Uh, situation, but. We already voted on the project, so it doesn't make a difference. But, so they're not, they decided not to have one. I disagree with that. We have our annual town meeting for a Monday in May. What, and what, we put it on that?
The, the, I, the concern that I would have, uh, the, the concern that I would have is that prior to May of twenty twenty five. Uh, voters, voters in Whitman would be going to the polls. With the fact in front of them that our regional agreement says it's a fixed debt share. Now, would some people digest the idea that maybe five have said yes, but it's not six? So, that's something we can talk about offline, Dan, about the, 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 the potential for being able to have a, a special. If, if I'm counting heads right now and, and Dustin has provided more information than I had. So I, I put four on the screen and Dustin is five and my.
We have to be, because we have to, but we have to resolve.
That's right.
Much as not, but right, I'm voting no before we can.
That's right.
We have to do my year.
And I, and I believe it's been a few weeks since I checked the town website. I know you had a, you had a special town meeting scheduled in June. It was, it was canceled and turned into an informational meeting.
Yes.
And I thought I picked up something that said there was going to be a special in December. If I'm right, that could be number six right there.
I think we have, we have.
Let me say, it, it's pretty, anyone, any town that didn't have the MBTA's own authority, more or less will have one by December first of February. It would be crazy not to.
Right.
So, I, I would say that out of all the, out of the nine communities, I believe it was only Situate. That, or Situate and Cohasset that approved it, or Cohasset already has one scheduled.
We approved it.
Yeah, you.
You've got, you've. You've got the train in your town. We don't, you know, we don't, we're, we're. Close to a train. Right, you got no, basically, you got basically, you know, authority not to prove because of the situation.
That's right, you know.
No, the train's in.
So, so, so the question marks would be Whitman, Abington and Hanover at this point. And I'll follow up with those, I'll follow with those communities about.
Yeah, for sure.
Their status on a special, on a special town.
Tom, could, could this question on changing of the agreement beyond the ba, the ballot on voting to. Uh, school?
No, o- only Dan, because the regional agreement says that regional agreements amendments are within the wheelhouse of the town, of town meetings.
I'm sure.
So there's no ballot option to change a regional agreement. It's, it's um, all passed leads to town meeting, respected town meetings, yeah.
Maybe you ought to call the other best.
Yeah, I'm happy.
And tell them about the situation.
Yep.
And that, you know, we could call a special town meeting. And anything else we may need it for, but I mean, this question.
In my, in my opinion, uh, the idea, the, the genesis of this idea uh, came, came from Whitman.
Yeah.
And I think it's.
Right, we're all that far.
And whether this project passes or not, this is an improvement to our regional agreement. So if there's a way that we can, we can get the records at towns, that's great. And then. And then we move forward, talking to our communities about a project, saying, here's how we're gonna calculate debt shares under, on, on this time frame.
You need to hold the top floor.
I don't know why, some, some of these towns, when they're notified and notified, you, with years going over this last year, again. Why they don't have it on their agenda to have these special town, they, they don't like debt exclude. They think, they should already have that in their floor plan, because other than that, it doesn't just get thrown, and they get thrown in their lap. Then they don't have a floor plan for it. So that's why these administrators should be in there. But I'm not, I'm not too concerned with that. So.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. That was a lengthy one agenda I had for me. Uh, and the only other thing I have is for Sandy.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'll do the administrative report, then you probably have a brush.
Thank you.
Let me read my data. Miss Fidge Woods, just walk there.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Well, so I'll take it a little bit, um, uh. Less intense, a little less out of your, um, I have promised Tom an annual report from my desk. Um, as part of my role as principal of the church. So thank you for reporting that in my, my first year as principal of the church at time. Um, I think by all accounts, it was a successful school year. That doesn't mean that there weren't trouble spots. It doesn't mean that there were conflict situations in. All aspects of school. Um, we're a public entity and that is the name of the game, but in general, we had a successful school year. So. I'm just gonna give you a few highlights in a couple of different buckets. So I'm gonna give you a couple of highlights from student health and personal accountability. I'll give you some highlights in the area of teaching and learning, and then I'll give you some highlights in the area of community building. So just some. Some overarching ideas, uh, without the other points. For Tom, I have a taken a look at my report, and I'm not too sure with my color, but I figured to make sure I represented them well. Um, then he certainly shared out of it. Uh, but in terms of student, uh, health and personal accountability, our students came to school at three and a great, so ninety four, ninety five percent. Our students are coming to school.
Yours great.
Uh, our students had fewer out of school suspensions, fewer in school suspensions and pure accountability matters formerly known as tensions. Uh, because we changed our entire disciplinary accountability system. It is now accountability. Um, the philosophy and practices, every decision is made to keep students in classes whenever possible. All the while ensuring that our educators are fully supported into the health situations. Um, most importantly, our practices reduce the number of repeated incidents. Our students did not do the same thing. Two times as often as they have in the past. So our, our practices are working. And why and how is really, um, educational practices? We included education in every step. Um, through remediation on whatever the, the issue was, just to spacing. Um, and a strong supports from the family. And at every level, our families are involved in the conversation. So those, those are, there is, those are the why. Um, in terms of the teaching and, and I, I would also say that the strong support that we have in our student services center. Um, not just our, our regular educators, our regular counselors, but the number of specialists we have supporting our students. Uh, thanks to the, the, the good budgeting work that you do here. Uh, we have a year round hacker specialist. We have, uh, so we have a, um. Uh, our, um, speech pathologist. We have, um. Adjustment counselors and we have, um, the opportunity to work with specialists, um, therapists. And B C D A's to help our students. So the well rounded support to, um, a positive, um, go in the rejection. In terms of our, our student population, that, that genre. Um, in terms of teaching and learning, um, we did, um. Targeted professional development. Uh, we focused on equitable classroom practices from de-escalation techniques. To executive function strategies and also the learning tools, um, to become more culturally proficient with our students from backgrounds. Um, uh, from a variety of backgrounds and cultures. Uh, and we supported our educators, cross students, shops, emotional learning, adjusted time, um, supports for teachers to identify students' behaviors. So it's not just about identifying the student and what the student needs to do to do for justice, but what's happening in your classroom. And what teacher, what can a teacher learn about how to support their own physical and mental learning while making suggestions, their practices to make, make a better learning environment. And in terms of grading, we continue, continuing with our approach, um, with a renewed focus on grading what a student knows and is able to do. We worked out some of the case. We. Words instead of letters in most cases. Uh, and we developed and updated our student, uh, parent interface on higher school that we feel. Um, will clarify areas of confusion, uh, our original platform presented. Uh, we'll share more about that as school year begins, but I can tell you that our, uh, students with disabilities. Uh, their grades were just slightly better than they were under our old system. When we focused in on what they were. What they knew and they were able to do, and we peeled off layers of, of, of work on a soul behavior. Um, they performed better. And our students, um, who were looking at four year institutions, two year institutions were accepted at high rates. At competitive schools. That was true, taking a look at the back of the graduation programs is pretty competitive of those who are accepted programs. Um, so we, it's working. What we're doing is working, our students were not afforded trying having words as part of their, their reading system. So I'm excited about that. Uh, in terms of the area of community building, our students and athletes, uh, not only performed on, our student athletes not only come in the field. Um, but they supported our community with at least three hundred hours of service to our community. Um, our staffing, we have a hundred percent of our faculty, uh, who ended our school year in two thousand twenty four. Were trained to us in the fall of two thousand twenty four. And we added a new health and wellness instructor to, uh, our team. Um, our vocational students slayed competitions. And in our community, um, through volunteer events. Uh, or, or you can see our school, um, trailer at almost every event across the town shore. Um, we are ever present and we are grateful. And we can see our students anywhere, we can showcase in their talents, um, um. Unco- polished by their own will and skill and through the dedication of the educators who are teaching them. Our students are leading our community, as I said, but just to build new ones at a wide variety of competitive colleges. In September, so that ends sort of the highlight reel. You'll get a report that did a little bit deeper into a wider variety of areas, but. In September, what I will do is I'll provide our specific focus for the two thousand twenty four, twenty five school year. And you'll find this supporting the new building project at all levels, while ensuring that our students get the best possible education. For in our, in our current school for the next four years. So I'll leave you with some big extra questions. That we're developing action plans for the two thousand twenty five assessment. Talk about changing the language of our rating. Now we're focusing on our assessment practice to support that structure, that infrastructure. How are we ensuring that our students are learning what they should? That's the question. Artificial intelligence. How are we using the world around us to better our instructional environment? AI can better our instructional environment. How are we gonna do that well? Actually, in terms of our L students, what are we doing to adjust our instruction practices and our family communication to support our changing population? And what are our plans for targeted interventions for our Chinese students and all subgroups? Finally, are our students feeling safe and supported and seen? And in terms of communication, do our communication practices meet our constituent needs? Those are questions that we'll be asking ourselves in July and August. Um, in July and August, I can't remember the year, um, and planning action for the next three years. So I thank you, uh, for allowing me to share with you. I look forward to doing so next school year. I'll send my report a little wider than yours.
My, my, I have a couple of questions, my, and your question. Don't, please. Okay. Um, how, the adjustment from during the. The COVID season where kids were all left at home on the computers and now they're back in the regular school and the change and, you know, the, the basic environment. How is the exchange? Was it that I have, you would hear on the news where it was very difficult for a lot of school systems. To get back into the normality of going to school every day and leaving your house. I mean, how did we do with that? I mean, I know it's.
Really long and complicated answer. I would say that South Shore Tech itself, our students who are enrolled here, one pandemic that happened, were now.
Yeah.
Um, they, we did such a good job as a school. Thank you. And ensuring that our students were here on campus. Our students felt it less than others. But our students who were coming from eighth grade, seventh grade, they enrolled in our school, the transition was difficult coming from. Um, the situation where they may not have been in school for quite some time, the transition back to the socialization piece and the rigor of the classroom. Um, there was a time period where we needed to adjust our expectations. I do think we are at a point where we are able to be back where we were. We were in terms of what we expect of students and their behaviors. There's a normalcy, um, and rigor, a high level of rigor. Um, we're back where we began. Now I'm starting to take a look at our subpopulations to make sure that those groups can access the highest level of rigor as all students can.
Okay, and how, uh, we still doing M P S, right?
We are still doing M P S.
How do we do, I mean, being home and now it's a back into, back into the school, was there a drop in in fast, fast, you know. Percentage and then back, back up or?
We, they're better, um. In the years just after the pandemic.
Yeah.
Um, and every year it, it shifted it and we're still awaiting our scores from the two thousand twenty four, twenty three, twenty four school year. So those reports will come to you. Um, probably in October, we have all of our data back in the analysis.
Good, okay, thank you. Like that's all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Hannah. Thank you. Okay, before I go on to the next thing, yeah, I'd just like to make a personal statement here and just to thank everybody for the support. That you've given me for the last two years as working as your chairman, and I really enjoyed it. And, uh, with that being said, I'm gonna turn the gavel over to Jim. Over the elections, which comes to the green pot, uh, packet in Europe.
Not too hot, yeah.
We're looking for this pot all night.
So I put it at the end.
Gotta let it charge. Once a year, once a year. Um, so the nomination process and the election process for our next seven years. Uh, school community leadership is as follows. Uh, we accept nominations from the field. And then once the nomination is entered into the, into the, um, field, then there's a second. Um, we ask for initial nominations and so forth and so on. Once all the nominations are, um, entered into the field. Then you go to the ballot and you vote toward the person who is nominating. For the, um, for the position. At that point, I gather the ballots and based upon. The ballots, the top two individuals who we see votes will then go into a second election. Um, and then on that second election, the person with the highest vote will, um, become, um. The person in that position with this chairman, vice chairman. Normally, we do the, the chairman first, um. So that if there was someone who was not elected chairman, can then enter the name into the vice chairman, um, election piece. So. At this point, I'd like to open up the floor for nominations for chairman for, um, this will, um, to the school year, fiscal twenty five.
I'd like to nominate Jack Manning, chairman.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Okay, we have a nomination with Jack Manning, um. Do we have any other nominations on the floor? One more time, do you have any nominations on the board? See no nominations on the board. I can wave the ballot action and ask for a vote on Jack Manning for the next chairman of the school. All those in favor?
I have heard.
No need to presume Thomas, Thomas got enough of it, of his own itself, okay? Better than you may notice. Congratulations, Jack. I'll give this to you in like two minutes. Um, at this point, I would like to open the floor for nominations for vice chairman.
Ms. Haywood.
Nominate Dustin Ridd.
Second Matt.
And Dustin, thank you. Uh, do we hear any, any other nominations for vice chair? One more time, we'll hear your nominations for vice chair. With that, I closed the nomination process for vice chairman. Um, Dustin, you were the only nomination today. Could I have a verbal vote of, um, wrapping Duncan as vice chairman?
Vice chairman for fiscal twenty-five. There, we'll get, thank you. You've done, you've saved. Did that. Thank you very much. Give me out, we'll save it. Same thing here. Request for action. You're a trash, you're a guy. You don't get the table. We have any requests for action? The motion for adjournment.
Uh some move, without disrespect.
Dustin. All of them favor.
Uh hi.
Hold. You're kidding me. Where, John, this is chair, uh where, John? Sorry, I said no.